Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, November 16th. We are in our board work session. Members present in the boardroom, we have members Higgins, Jacobs, Lessons, Wilson, Bellamy. I think, I don't see anyone online. And then we have Dr. Bishop and several staff. Did I miss anyone? All right, thank you. So the first order of business on our agenda is... Oh, Lon's online. Hi Lon. Welcome, you and Tiffany. I'm going to introduce you guys in just a second. We just have a little bit of board business to do with our RFI. So Katie, could you put the requests that we have not? Okay, update on school-based mental health service model. Is that something that can be done in the board? This week? Awesome. So that can go to board connect Katie. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one. Yeah, should be twenty one, twenty two staff wellness. So the question submitted was, are there any opportunities within our current calendar that we can possibly provide time for staff for self-care? Specifically time that will not have to be made up. So I'm not quite, is that a big... Very good. And so we can expect an update. When do you think? I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
Sure, Madam President, we can put some information in the board connect. We did put a little bit in there in regard to that last week as well. Just the, bring it back to the board and the board can vote, but then also acknowledge when we take things off the plate or put things on, we have to just adjust that, just so that that's out there as well.
Staff time is not an issue? In terms of, because I mean...
I mean, you can, I mean, honestly, we can do anything we want. It's just that we have to know what is the trade-off. And if the board comes to the decision on the trade-off, then there's not a problem. But right now, there's quite a bit of work, stress, you know, at every level. And so if we take that off, but we have to acknowledge, I think, as well that we are focusing on this rather than some of the other goals that we've had.
I would like to, I mean, our process is, is that it needs to be more than just one person interested in that, and I'm assuming others are interested?
Part of our snow days where this was wrapped up in there and the understanding about we've had one and a half thus far that are not going to be made up by staff or students.
Thank you. Okay, sub-teacher shortage, just in, let's see. I can't really see it. Okay, are there, okay, there it is. Update on substitute teacher shortage. How is the recruitment process going? Are we being successful? How are principals managing to cover classes? Board connect? Yes, absolutely. Member Jacobs, now push that little button, there's a button.
Oh, there we go. All right, thank you, Madam President. I just had a quick question. I think at a prior meeting or maybe even a work session, the administration mentioned it might have a plan to address the substitute shortage at some point. Is that, am I remembering that correctly? Is it still under development or is that, was that referring to something else?
We actually did. We have incentives and incentivized it based on the feedback from schools. And I can share, that went into effect. It took a little bit to study to who folks are. Man, I update right now, is that okay? So we have part of the federal guidelines, and Mr. Higgins probably knows this well, in regard to insurance is that if someone works 120 days, you offer them insurance. So in the past, there were some limits on substitutions due to that. And we are pulling that, so offering, because we have a lot of our long-term people in classrooms now, and schools and principals wanted the consistency. So that's part of it. The other part is really incentivizing long-term substitutes, increasing their pay. And then we're also moving to a tiered system, and we rolled this out this week with principals, a tiered system to incentivize staff in regard to, and again, these positions are some of the lowest-paid hourly wages that we're incentivizing if you, for incentives to, after you work 40 days, you receive an incentive after you work 80 days. And so there's an incentive to continue to come in. For our staff that is here, we put a reminder that hourly staff be sure that we're clocking hours and paying overtime or giving their leave. We pay time and a half for leave as well, if they'd rather have that. So ensuring that that is completed, or some staff want to trade out time, that's perfectly fine, that would be the leave part. As well as, as we ask staff to cover, those positions are paid during the day. So if I missed my planning time, we're ensuring that we're paying certificated staff, that primarily is for certificated staff. And that's articulated in the CBA. So we're really trying to stick with those. I would say that even money probably doesn't take the stress away. It's, it is really day-to-day. You know, we've heard that we're, you know, feels like it's spring already because we're working so much. But we wanted to be sure that none of those were missed. And so for, interestingly enough, the priorities from school really came from those that support the school, that support the certificated people. So that was really nice and honoring those that are coming in to support us. So that went into effect. It took a little bit to come to some agreements and make some changes. So we're looking forward to continue employment of our folks because we can compete with outside Christmas time or holiday time salaries.
Thank you. Any, not seeing any more questions on that one. The last one, well, this may not be the last because you might have some that I, what I, the ones that are on the board are the ones that I am reflecting from what's come to me from you guys. And then the last one, number four, has to do with student behavior. Are we seeing any improvement since the superintendent's message? What does first quarter OS, uh, school suspensions look like? And that can be a...
That'd be great in the board connect.
All right, so we've got them all in board connect. Are there any other requests from, requests for information? You can always submit them, so this is not your only time. Okay, thank you, Katie. Thank you, board. And now I would like to go into the reason we are here today. We have two special guests from the Alaska Association, Association of Alaska School Boards. We have Lon Garrison and we have Tiffany Jackson. Lon is online. I'm glad you could be with us virtually. See, there is a, you know, there's a virtual nugget there for us. And Tiffany, welcome in the boardroom. And so without further ado, we're going to hand our trainings over to, to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. It's good to be there with you, at least virtually. Sometimes you never know what a day is going to throw at you, and the best-laid plans don't always work out the way you had intended. So unfortunately, I'm not able to be there in person, although I had planned to be. It just didn't work out that way. So I certainly apologize. My colleague Tiffany Jackson, who's the Director of Membership Services, is there in person and, and live. So I'm going to rely on her as we go through the presentations and the activities that we have arranged to work with you on today. But I just want to say thanks. Thank you for inviting us. And we look forward to having, hopefully, some good discussions with you that is centered around the idea of, of shared governance. Back almost two months ago now, both Board Member Higgins and President Bellamy reached out to AASB and was, they were interested in knowing if we could come talk to the board about governance and oversight and the relationship between the board and the superintendent. He said we'd be happy to do that. So here we are today. That's what we're going to focus on. I kind of want to preference, preface the presentations and the activities that Tiffany and I are going to go through and say that, you know, we understand that the board has been working for some years now with the Council of Great City Schools. You've put in a lot of work in terms of developing how the board works and the governance model that uses the Council of Great City Schools. And, and I just want to say that while we each take a slightly different approach, I think the focus on the outcomes is the same. And so our presentation today is not necessarily intended to, you know, change any of the work that you do, but really focus today on this idea that governance and oversight of the entire district is a relationship between both the board and the superintendent. And without a good relationship between those two entities, a shared relationship piece, things just aren't going to work very well. So we want to explore this relationship a little bit, a little bit more, give you the opportunity to have some conversations about it and talk about, you know, things where the board, you know, maybe there's some questions for the board and/or even the superintendent, and talk about how the board can continue to move forward and, and work on this. I think Tiffany would agree that this is something that both the boards and administrations have to continually work on. Tiffany, do you want to add anything to that kind of setting the context for what we're going to cover today?
No, I think Lon has really shared well the purpose of us being here and hopefully we're able to just help supplement the work that ASD has been doing on good board superintendent relationships and shared governance and excited to be working with you all today.
All right. Well, we have, we have put together three relatively short presentations to help guide the conversation today. And a lot of the, the work that I'm going to be sharing with you has been put together by some colleagues that we work with through some national affiliations. Dr. Phil Gore is going to be, is going to be the first person that we're going to use a lot of information that he's put together. He currently works as the Division Director for Director, or for Membership Services with the Texas School Boards Association. And he's been at this for quite some time. So I'm going to get into the first presentation and I'm going to share my screen. And just make sure that everybody can see that. Does that show up on your end? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So this presentation, I'm, I'm borrowing this from Dr. Gore, who has given us permission to use it. And this is going to kind of set the context for what we're going to talk about for the rest of the afternoon. And it's really this idea of board superintendent partnerships. And the idea that, you know, a board can't function if it, it can't function well and it can't do the work that it needs to do if it doesn't have a good partnership with its superintendent, its chief executive officer. And vice versa, the superintendent really can't fulfill their role if they don't have a good relationship with the board. And so it really is a shared relationship experience. So really, why is this important? And it seems pretty self-evident, but really working together as a governance team is, is a critical practice for both school boards and superintendents. The partnership is paramount to every relationship in the district. So I think you know, as, as, as you've gone through these, these last several years, and, and some of you are new coming back to the board. I know Mr. Higgins is. And then some of you are brand-new to the board. That, and certainly this year is one of those years where I think it, it certainly can create stress for everybody. And this is ultimately the time where, you know, it really is imperative that the two entities of this shared relationship work well together. So let's get into this idea of the board superintendent partnership a little bit more.
So what boards can do to help foster and grow the superintendent and board relationship? One, represent the local community and its values for their schools. That's why you were elected. Your constituents elected you because they identified with you and they're hoping that you will be effective in communicating their values in your role in governing as the school board. Establishing and monitoring progress on the vision. You know, with every meeting, are you looking at your vision and evaluating how, what is the progress that we're making as a district towards this? Selecting effectively evaluating the school chief administrator. You have a superintendent you've been lucky to have for a number of years. And then to, I know as a former executive director, it was always really important to me during the evaluation process, even when things are going well, I want to know, there has to be things that I could do to improve. So that's the same thing in a school board superintendent relationship. Having that evaluation piece for the, making sure, one, that there, there's effective communication established. Two, that your superintendent knows what areas that you think they could be doing better. And three, what areas they're doing really well within the district. And then engaging local community for improving student learning, which is why we are all here and involved in public education for improved student learning. So the correlation with student achievement, having written goals for your superintendent that focus on student outcomes. It's not just enough to have our, you know, grand vision, that's wonderful, but what specifically are we going to be focusing on, on the upcoming year? What specifically should the superintendent be focusing their time and energy on? Two, communicating the performance and expectations for the, for, for the superintendent to the community. You are that conduit between the superintendent and your community. You were the one that's helping, you know, in the meetings, your community sees your superintendent and may have relationships and communicating with the district outside of that. But as the elected officials, you are the ones that the community are going to go to when they see, have questions and knowing how to facilitate those questions and direct them and educate your community on the operations of the school is going to be imperative. And then base decisions on the superintendent's contract on, about the contract on the objective evaluation, their performance towards the achievement of goals. The evaluation's not going to be, well, I really didn't like the shoes the superintendent was wearing. It's going to be how effective that, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be how effective are they in administering the operations of the school district? How effective are they in increasing student learning and working with the staff? And any decisions on their contract are going to be based on their executive management of the school district.
And Tiffany, could I just interject here? That, you know, one reason this particular item is on there is, as we well know, and, and as Tiffany and I have worked with districts, other districts and their superintendents, and looking at the superintendent's evaluation, and of course, ultimately, the contract, is really this idea that during the evaluation, it's one point in time, or it could be a couple of points in time during the year, depending on how you do the evaluation, that there can be, and hopefully is, an effective, an effective conversation about this particular issue, about, you know, the evidence for moving the district towards meeting the goals of the district and/or the implementation of the strategic plan. And it's, you have to have that conversation between the board and the superintendent, and it has to be a constructive conversation so that both parties understand the work that they're doing and how their role pertains to that. So that's really why, you know, in terms of a correlation with student achievement, it should be focused on student achievement. And I know that as, and some of the information that I looked at with the Council of Great City Schools, it focuses on student outcomes. And that's what we agree on is one of the most important things. So that focus on student outcomes, on what you want to be seen, should also be a big part of the conversation that boards and superintendents have. And the evaluation is just one piece of that.
Well, I think Lon and I would both agree that it should be an ongoing process and that it's just a snapshot, like Lon said, it's just a snapshot of your relationship at that point in time. But when you get to that evaluation piece, it should never be a gotcha or surprise situation. Anything that you're talking about with your superintendent at their evaluation should be something that they're aware of throughout the year. So if concerns come up, if kudos come up, that they know going into the evaluation that that has been something that the board wanted to identify and work on up to that point. So continuing on, collaborating with staff in the community to formulate and maintain district plans with goals and outcomes. How are you working with your community? How are you getting that outreach? How are they participating in any strategic planning? How are you working with your superintendent to ensure that that collaboration is happening? Basing ongoing work such as policy development, but decision-making, budgeting on district goals. One of, you probably all know Timmy Tellus, but one of her favorite examples is, you know, there was a rare situation where at the end of the year, a superintendent called it said, you know, we're at the end of our budgeting process and looking, everybody wants, there's this little bit of extra funding and everybody wants it. How do we decide who gets it? Okay, pull out your district goals, your strategic plan. What can you do that will support the work that the board has identified as a priority with those funds? So that's one of them. And then continually monitoring progress towards your goals and outcomes of the plan. How are you working together? Is it quarterly? Is it monthly? How are you monitoring your goals to ensure that you're achieving them? What kind of information are you asking from your superintendent to ensure that you're making progress on these goals? And how are you communicating that information out to your community as well? Lon?
Thank you. So before we move on to the next slide, I guess I just want to see from those members that in, in the room there and, and any that might be attending online. You know, does this, how does this sound to you? Does it, does it sound appropriate? Does it sound like something the board has been doing or working on? Or are there any, is there anything new here that you hadn't known about or would like to have a conversation about?
So it's not new. We have been, it just reaffirms, it reaffirms the work that we're doing and, and gives, and it also kind of creates a kind of check, kind of list checklist, I guess. Collaboration is ongoing and we can do everything that we're talking about. We can do it a lot better. The community piece is a huge piece for us. We're trying to figure out better ways to engage with the community, community on an ongoing basis. So I think it's very, it's very timely and it's very, very relevant. We just adopted our goals, not even a year ago, maybe almost a year ago, our goals in guardrails. And we are monitoring them. So we're, and we're still balancing the, the monitoring with all the other stuff that has to be done.
Okay, great.
Anybody else?
You know, I'm, is it on?
Yes. Green light.
Thank you. You know, this is going to be an ongoing process because, you know, I'm referencing things in the past to today, and I wasn't here the last couple of years. So it's hard for me to do an assessment of what the board's been doing or not doing the last two years. I've got a feedback and I've made comments, but I haven't been part of that process. I just know that the level of engagement we were in doing whenever I was on the board in the past was a lot higher. It was a lot higher in regards to what types of program changes. The budgeting process was a two-day process where the board got completely educated by each department on what the goals would be, and we spent four days on that. And it took a while, but the board really engaged in it. When I got off the board, that was a big issue because it was viewed as unethical if we made any changes to the thing. So I don't know what the, what the current board versus then is, but the, but how to take, carry forward and what we're going to be doing in regards to feedback from staff and how are we going to have a discussion in regards to different curriculum activities, to program development, to changes and all, is, is a level of conversation I really want to see out there a lot more. And so I focus on the three things I remember the NSBA focused on. You're the voice of the public, you set the direction, you're responsible, and you're responsible for accountability. And it's the accountability issues, other than just getting reports, that's an important issue to me. How do we make sure that from our standpoint, the administration is addressing issues important to the public or concerns? Whether it's operational cost efficiency to issues in regards to operational issues otherwise. It could be ethics issues, it could be dealing with concerns the public has in regards to what types of programs we have, all that type of stuff. So that level of, of discussion and things of that nature, it's that voice of the public, you set the direction and you, you're responsible for ensuring accountability. It's that accountability issue is probably going to be the most interesting, I think, from our standpoint, because that's an involvement in the school district operations. And I just don't know where we're going to be headed, but that's an important issue from my standpoint.
Any, any other comment? Not seen any. Lon, back to you.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for that feedback. And I, I think those are some good points. And these are, you know, both what President Bellamy and then Member Higgins brought up. These are kind of the thorny issues that boards have to kind of decide how they're going to do, how they're going to do things. And, and they can't do that by themselves. They've got to do that along with the administration. So it has to be a conversation on both sides. And you have to develop that relationship so that event, that you're building trust. And if that trust isn't there, it's going to be hard to decide where those lines are going to be. And the relationship is likely to change a little bit over time. And certainly, as you get new board members, the board changes. You will, you know, even one new member to a board is basically going to create a new board. You try to build culture within the board so that, you know, there are behaviors that are expected and this is how the board does its work. But one new member can change that culture a little bit, and the board has to kind of reinvent itself a little bit and work towards that. So let me press on here a little bit and talk about, really, eight characteristics of effective school boards. And this was work that was really done about 10 or 12 years ago on a national level and, and really focusing on, okay, as you look at school boards that are, are doing well and school districts that are doing well and governed by school boards that appear to be effective, what are the things that we see? One of those is that the boards set high expectations. There's high expectations for the board itself, high expectations for the districts. And there's high expectations with the superintendent and the superintendent of the board. So high expectations is one of the prime pieces in this relationship. The next one is that everybody shares a strong belief that is common to the district. Where are we going? The vision is well-understood. And, and the vision, the mission, and ultimately where the strategic plan is taking the district. Then as Pat said, talking about accountability, are you accountability-driven? Okay, and where does that accountability lie? It's going to be... It's going to be a shared accountability. I mean, ultimately, the board is going to be the primary one that's going to be accountable to its constituency. But the superintendent is a piece of that governance unit. So obviously the superintendent has to provide evidence for the entire district to be accountable to the communities. There has to be a collaborative relationship between the board, the superintendent, staff, the community, the whole ball of wax. But really, when you look at effective boards, they have a very collaborative relationship between the board and the administration. Boards are data savvy when they're effective. So, you know, you're going to be getting a lot of different information. We're going to talk about data here in a little bit, but that ability to understand where the data comes from, what kind of data it is and what to do with that data is really critically important. And that's not always easy. Sometimes it can be pretty complicated. And, you know, the board needs to understand that it has a responsibility, you know, when looking at data to use that appropriately. Aligning, alignment of resources. This really comes down to your opportunity as a board to allocate resources and make sure those allocations are in alignment with the goals that the board has set and/or the strategic plan that was developed for the district. Finally, we get to the last two, which is united team leadership. Now, that doesn't mean everybody is always in lockstep with each other. Oftentimes you're going to find that you don't agree on things and that's okay. But in the end, once something happens and the board has come to a decision on that, and it may not, it may be a split decision, the decision is made and the board moves forward. And that's really important. We understand that everybody brings their own perspective to the table and we understand that board members have the opportunity to express that. But as the board makes the decision, the decision then belongs to the entire board and you move forward with that decision. And then finally, team development and training. You can't do this without investing in yourselves. I certainly remember as a former school board member, that if it wasn't for the fact that we invested in training every year, having somebody from ASB come and work with us, that happened to be Timmy at the time. So knowing that and, and having that person work with us and understand our roles and our ability to work as a board was critically important. And having some conversations that you just can't have anywhere else is really important. So in the end, if you look at, well, what's, what's this, you know, taking a kind of a graphic look at the effect of boards on student achievement, and that is ultimately what we want to be focused on. You've probably heard us say this many times, but, you know, oftentimes we'll say to people, okay, what are we talking about here? Are we talking about big people problems or are we talking about little people problems? The things that affect students? And what are those responsibilities and conversations that we have? Sometimes we have to have tough conversations. They're not going to be easy. Sometimes they can ruffle feathers, but in the end, what we want to do is come back and make sure that that tough conversation led to something that improved. We need effective relationships. It doesn't mean everybody has to like everybody, but we have to know what our responsibilities are, what our roles are, and that we're focused on students, making expectations clear. I think that's probably one of the most important things that we get, we get caught up in. People are confused. We didn't, the board didn't make the expectation clear or the superintendent didn't make an expectation clear on what the, you know, how the board could work with the superintendent to get something done. And that really kind of goes into effectively communicating with each other. And then finally, just working together. And that can take some work. I know from my former board experience, there were certainly board members that I didn't necessarily get along with. And it took some work on my part and their part to understand where we came from and that we had different perspectives. And in the end, we were a better board for it. Tiffany, you got any, any thoughts before I move on off of that one from your experience as a board member?
You know, I think most of my thoughts are kind of well-related to the very next slide and having those tough conversations. One, the very first one, why, when you're getting ready to, tough conversations are all about relationships. And I say that all the time in every workshop that I do. It's based on the relationships you have as board members to each other, as a board to your superintendent. And any relationship that you have is only going to be as good as the last communication piece that you had. So if you're communicating well, great. And if, but if you have just even one poor piece of communication, that's going to impact your relationship. So when you're coming together as a board, you have a fairly new board. Getting to know each other, why did you run for the board? I'd be straight up, when I first ran for the school board, I ran for the wrong reasons. I didn't understand what it meant to be on a school board. And I was elected in October. I went to an ASB training in November and I went, wow, this is really not what I expected. Thankfully got the professional development as a board member and was able to move forward in a really positive manner to help advocate for student achievement. So getting to know the background of your board. Why do they want to be board members? Why are they here? Making sure that you're clear of what you expect of your board and of your superintendent, setting those clear expectations. I was in a workshop recently where somebody said, you know, it's really unclear what the expectation of me is. And when we had this conversation in a board meeting, I felt like things got really contentious. And the board said, yeah, it was a really hard conversation. And it really got back to the workshop. Everyone went, really appreciate having the space, safe space to work with my board members to clearly line out those expectations so we know when we come together as board members and our superintendent, what is expected of us, what is expected of you, and it clears the air and it lets you work together effectively. What information you need and how. There are some board members that like lots of data. There are some board members that just want highlights. As a board, I, you know, President Bellamy earlier said during your process that it takes a couple of board members to trigger requesting something because it does take time and resources from your superintendent to pull information together. So being really clear about those expectations of what information you need from your superintendent and how you expect to get it. Are you a representative or a delegate? And this bullet, I'm going to bounce to Lon because he made the slide.
Yeah. Well, this comes back to that idea about, you know, are boards representative of communities or do they function as a delegate? In other words, as a representative, you're, you're there basically representing a constituency, right? And as a delegate, it's a little bit of a different take on that. As a delegate, you've been elected to represent a wide variety of constituencies. And so this idea of, well, how do I fit? Do I only have to answer to one, to one part of the community? Or now as a board member, do I rep, do I need to try and represent the whole? And I think that's, that's a pretty, that can be a very confusing thing because oftentimes when you run for a board, you run on an agenda, you get elected to the board, but now you're responsible for the, you know, your, some boards have designated seats and others don't. They're, they're at large. But when you come to the board table as a whole, the board is responsible for the entire district, not just one part of it. And I think that is where oftentimes, whether it's a seat or it's an issue, it's a philosophy, you know, the idea of who am I representing or am I a delegate charged to represent the whole? I hope that kind of makes sense.
Thanks Lon. So next, what do I want to accomplish? Lon just talked about when we first got elected that we probably ran on issues that were important to us, but once we get elected, we are now a part of a team and personal agendas really don't have a place on a team. It's working together to accomplish, what I hope we're all on the same team for is increased student achievement and helping our students be, get the best education possible. And then tough conversations. What really irritates me, it's important to have this conversation sometime. We say it's equally important to do the board self-evaluation as it is to do the superintendent evaluation, in part to have a safe space to have those conversations about things that may, as a board member, irritate you when it comes to participating in the meeting. One of the things that I used to love to say was my favorite bad behavior in a meeting, but you know, at a self-evaluation, the worst sound used to be somebody opening their packet because you knew that they were not going to be prepared for the conversation that you were having. And it's important to have those conversations with your board members because if they're spending time asking questions in a meeting that were answered in the packet, that might really irritate you and it's time to express in the board self eval. We expect everybody to read their packets, to be prepared and to have questions articulated that maybe you couldn't answer yourself reading the packet. Next slide. So when it comes to effective relationships, how do we facilitate those? Shared earlier, your relationships are based upon your last communication, whether it's written communication, verbal communication in a board meeting individually. As good or bad as that last communication is, is going to be, give you a temperature reading on your relationship right now. You want to make sure that it's open and honest, that you clarify those expectations so you know what's expected of you and of your superintendent. They take a lot of time and a lot of work. When we talk about no surprises and communication expectations, something that I used to do was, it wasn't just, I wasn't just a board member when I was in a meeting. When I'm going through social media and I see somebody saying something about the school, I'm not responding, but I am making sure that the superintendent has that information. I am making sure that the board president has that information so that nobody's caught off guard or surprised. And making sure that we all have a shared purpose when we're together, of our mission, our vision. And we will have challenges. It's been one of the most challenging years in education that I can remember since I've been involved that ever, because it's just a challenging environment right now. And we need to work together as a team to keep in mind that it's not about the big people problems, it's about our little people and how are we best serving our students and ensuring that they get what they need to be successful. Lon?
Yeah, and I would say, you know, this, this slide, I was just reflecting all the pieces that this slide brings forward. And I was thinking about, you know, how, looking back as I was on the school board and Sitka coming in, thinking about, well, these are the things that were important to me and then what were the things that, that irritated me about some board members? And, and I think what I've learned over time is that, you know, everybody has, everybody has a voice at the table and that voice is important. That perspective is important. It's important to have some patience and some empathy for your fellow board members. But it doesn't mean you're necessarily going to be best buddies. You're not always going to be friends. But if you kind of follow these few points, that your communications are open and honest, you're, you're, you have expectations that are easily understood and it's going to take time. It, it took, sometimes it takes years to develop some of those relationships. And in the end, it proved to be something that was effective and it moved the outcomes for students in the right direction. So thanks for sharing those, Tiffany. Maybe before I move on, does anybody have any reflections or comments on some of what we've gone over here in terms of, you know, effective relationships and, and being on the board? I mean, I know some of you are brand new to the board and you're still, you're still probably going through a lot of that and understanding how your relationship with fellow board members and, and your, you know, your participation on the board is evolving.
I'd just like to acknowledge that Member Holloman and Member Donley just have joined the meeting.
All right, great.
Any other comment? Yes. Member Jacob?
Thank you. So I, yeah, I mean, I guess thoughts and comments from what's been presented thus far, I want to echo is someone who's going through their first year on the board that it's, it's hard. And I think I've, I've mused about this with, with Member Wilson and Member Lessens, that it's hard transitioning from a, a campaign mentality where you can communicate as much as you'd like with other individuals to being subject to the Open Meetings Act. And, and so it does impede to a certain extent, some of that relationship building. So you have to be more intentional and strategic about how you do that. So that's, that's one, one thing I still chew on and kind of constantly evaluate just as a board member. The other thing, and it's more of a question, we talked about, question for ASB staff, we talked to, you folks talked about the difference in how boards operate with geographic representation versus at-large representation. Do you see any, any trends or meaningful association with, with one, a method of representation and efficacy in governance versus the other?
No, from my perspective, no, I really haven't. I mean, oftentimes it's set up for particular reasons. You know, when you look at REAAs, it's a way to provide representation for, you know, geographic regions that may be encompassed within one education attendance area. You know, in other communities where everybody's at large, it just provides an opportunity for a variety of representation there. And I can't say that one really is better than, than another. At times, especially in some rural districts where it becomes hard to find board members to represent maybe some of the smaller communities, that representation can be difficult to get to because you just simply might not have enough people to make that happen. Tiffany, from your perspective, what have you seen?
So most of my experiences have been as a board member and I was at large in a large, geographically large district, small student population. But I think even that, even though we were at large, there was still, okay, but you are from this community and these board members are from this community. So there was a perception of geographical representation and something that as a board member I really focused on is like, okay, I may be from this community, but I represent all the students and we're here for all the students, not just these students, not just those students. We're here to serve all students. So I, in, in working with school board members across the state, that's the impression I get from almost every school board member I've ever talked to is like, we're not just here for some students, we're here for all of our students. So to me, I don't, I don't see a lot of difference between the geographical representation and the at-large representation. Okay?
Anybody else?
Yeah. I just, I do a lot of these little kind of effective relationships, communications type things with others. And the only other thing I would add to that is, is an established process. Sometimes we get, we, we jump from establishing what the problem and opportunity we're trying to get focused on, discussing the, you know, the, the opportunities or the options, and we skip right to the selecting course of actions, things of that nature. And when we do have a disagreement, how do we go about resolving it with third parties or other issues involved? How do we effectively do that without creating more conflict than actually moving forward? So that's a, that's the only thing on effective relationships that I, I look at that and I'd say that's where a lot of the management teams I've worked on, that's where we have had to fall back on. It's just that communications process that we follow a particular process so that we don't, so that we won't get hung up in selecting a course of action without hearing each other in regards to what they see as, as the problem or the opportunity and discussing things before we get to that log a jam kind of situation.
That's a, that's a good point.
And, and I will actually agree with Member Higgins. Yeah, just pick yourself, yes, it's being recorded. Anyway, because I think sometimes it's not what we do, but it's how we do it. And I think with our bylaws, if we follow them, we still might need to tweak them, but I think the process, it's close to the process. It might not be the It might not be the right, it might not cover everything, but that's part of what we do, continual review of those, of our guiding documents so that we can get it, so that we can build these kinds of relationships. So it's not just the process to get along, it's the process to problem solve, to hold ourselves accountable, to do all of that. So, thank you.
And just adding on to that, if I may, Madam President, that I absolutely agree. And I will, I work with a lot of school districts and I would say probably three out of the last six workshops that I did specifically addressed, okay, when we have tough conversations, what is the process that we're going to follow to have those conversations? And that's where the policy nerd comes out in me, I'm like, all right, let's pull out the school district policy and see what it says and if there's any adjustments that need to be made.
Great. Anything else before I move to the next slide?
Just a time check, we have, we're almost an hour in, we have another hour to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to now switch gears just a little bit and talk, whoops, talk about student achievement and how, you know, as a board and a superintendent team, you both are so important in terms of looking at and moving forward with student achievement. So two things right off the back is that superintendents matter and boards make a difference. Both of them are critically important in terms of making sure that you're doing the right thing to move student outcomes in the right direction. The board and superintendent relationship really sets the course for everything that's going to take place in the, in the district. And that is, as we said at the very beginning, a primary driver in whether or not the district is going to be successful. And then, you know, student achievement really is, comes through a vision that is set with clear goals. So if the board has not set clear goals and the strategic plan should have clear goals, it's, it's the ability to understand what those goals are, are telling the district to do and where you need to go. And the board should have a complete understanding of that along with the superintendent, that there's no daylight between the two. And then finally, you know, in order to get improved student achievement, it really does require a focused course of action over time. And I think part of what you folks have been working on with, with the work that you've done with Council of Great City Schools is really focused on, okay, what are the outcomes? How are we going to monitor that? And what are the expectations and how do, how do we hold ourselves accountable with that? So that is that focused course of action over time. It really comes down to these clear expectations, you know, what's going to be the most important conversations that your team needs to have in order to understand those expectations and make a positive movement. Expectations are going to change over time. You know, plans are dynamic, goals can even be dynamic. So as you achieve a goal, or you achieve objectives within a goal, it may be time to either add new objectives or come up with new strategies if you've had a difficult time with the objective that is focused on supporting the goal. You need to have conversations continually. So going back, looking at your monitoring plan, understanding the work that you're doing and having those conversations because sometimes you're going to find things don't work. All right, we got to go back, we got to reevaluate. It maybe didn't work in that case, what are we going to do to fix it and how are we going to change course so that again, we're focused on student achievement? Checking to ensure that expectations are met, that goes back to your, your, your monitoring of your goals and holding yourselves and the superintendent accountable as you move forward. And then finally, find out, and that comes back to the monitoring plan, when you actually meet those expectations so that you can move on to the next piece and make sure you have that done.
So just recapping some of the conversation that we've already had this afternoon, what it looks like to have effective communication. Starts with listening, we want to be listening to understand, not just listening to respond. Requires caring about the other person's perspective, other points of view, coming in with an open mind. How are you focusing on the purpose and mission of the school district? Is it some, is the mission or the vision shared at every meeting so that board members are reminded, the administration is reminded, the community is reminded, including an open dialogue and ensuring that efforts to have a good relationship are ongoing? Because when we're working together, we know that there's no I in team and we're all here as a team to serve our students and no one individual, no individual board member, no just the superintendent alone cannot improve student learning, it takes us all coming together. And if we're not all together, is that all, what is it saying? Together we stand, or?
Together we stand, divided we fall.
There you go. It was in my brain right before I said it, then it fell out. And that we want to have strategic alignment with operations so they know what they're doing, we know what they're doing and building that working relationship together.
It looks like, Member Holloman, did you have your hand? Did I see your hand? Are you good?
I just waved.
Oh, okay. Welcome.
All right, to wrap up this, this particular part of, of the first presentation here, here are some things that came out of what was called the Lighthouse Study, and it was a long study that was done a number of years ago that really looked at how board leadership and board effectiveness han, affected student achievement. So these are some takeaways from the Lighthouse Study. The conditions that are created for success. One, making conditions, connections across the system. That means you have to have relationships with your superintendent and the superintendent board need to have relationships with staff, with students, community members. These are all things that intuitively we know, but sometimes they can be very challenging. In some areas, they may take more work than others, it may be easier to do some things. But you need to understand that there's a wide spectrum of connections that need to be made for the district to be successful. Knowing what it takes to change achievement. This is probably one of those pieces where, you know, really digging into the data, looking at alternatives, looking at monitoring the progress that you're trying to put in place takes a lot of time and work. And that's going to be a team effort. Obviously, you're going to rely heavily upon the administration to provide you with detailed information and data about how things are going, but it's going to be your responsibility to take that information and as a board, work through it and understand, okay, what are the things that are working, what aren't they, what isn't working? And what changes might we need to, to have in order to move things forward? You need workplace support, the board needs to be supportive of the district and the workplace, you need professional development from your staff, all the way up to yourselves as a board, you need to invest in yourselves as a board. There needs to be a balance of district direction and building autonomy. So from the Lighthouse Study, they identified that while there needs to be fidelity to the district, there also needs to be, I think with, even within districts, this idea of some local autonomy or local control. Within the state of Alaska, you know, we're extremely supportive of local control, knowing that not every community is just like their neighbor. So that idea that there is a local identity and some local needs that may not be the same as every other school in the district, for instance. There needs to be strong community connections. And then the distributed leadership is really important, that the board has a role, the superintendent has a role, staff, students and community all have a role in helping lead the district forward. Anything to add on that, Tiffany?
No, I think I'm going to let us keep on moving on because we still have a lot.
Okay. I did provide everybody with a handout on those slides and there's a couple of references for some additional information if you wish to follow up on it. So that wraps up the first piece. Any comments or questions before we move on to the next presentation?
Doesn't seem like there is anyone.
Okay. Hang on one second, let me bring up the next presentation. Stand by one second. Okay. We're now going to talk a little bit more in depth about roles and responsibilities. We're going to investigate the governance team in a little bit more depth. So the first thing we're going to talk about is this idea that I mentioned at the very beginning of the work that we're doing this afternoon, this idea about shared relationship, I mean, shared leadership. So shared leadership, what, who does what? So this can be confusing at times if we don't have those clear expectations. And sometimes it really means we have to have a conversation about who does what. So school boards make policy, superintendents run schools, that's kind of the traditional thinking. But it's not always quite so simple. What makes it more complicated? Anybody have an idea what might make this relationship more complicated?
Community members' expectation.
Okay. I think everybody comes into it with ideas about things they want to do and accomplish. So organically, I think school board members have the idea, I need to make these changes. I promised I'd do it in my campaign, that's what got me excited about running. But if all seven of us do that, it turns into a really complicated mess pretty quick. So I, you know, I think from a practical standpoint, you realize that's, that's not your, that's not what you were elected to do, that's not how you fit in the structure. So it takes a little time, I think, to kind of step back and go, how do I do something that's meaningful to me, but at the same time, let the people that have responsibilities to do their job do that every day? Okay, great.
For me, I think it's the whole notion of impact. We don't, we don't necessarily get to know, we don't have all the information we need. We think we do sometimes, but we do have, we know, we have, we have our ideas, we have our passions, and sometimes those things don't always allow us to get the big picture.
Yeah, it's not uncommon, especially if there's an issue that you're really passionate about, to get caught up in that and, and, and not understand, okay, that's not everybody's passion, or is that what we really need to be talking about in order to move the district forward? Okay, well, let me talk about in terms of this shared leadership idea about who does what and this idea about, well, school boards make policy and superintendents run schools. So one of the things that we know is that boards are responsible for policy. But guess what? Most of the time, most policy recommendations are going to come from superintendents. And the reason being is that the superintendents have to deal with policy day in, day out. They see what does and maybe what does not work. Does the policy cover every possible scenario that might come up? It may not. And policy over time may need to change because not everything stays the same. So this idea, that idea of shared relation, shared leadership is really evident in this one here. Boards are responsible for policy, but often that policy originates with superintendents. Superintendents often consult with boards before big strategic decisions, okay? Superintendents are delegated a fair amount of authority and they're going to make some big decisions. And those decisions should be in align with the board goals and the strategic plan. But that doesn't always mean that they can just go out there and do it in an autonomous manner, that when those big things come up, there needs to be effective communication between the board and superintendent. And remember, one of the things that we always, you know, one of our favorite adages is that we want no surprises, right? The bull, that everybody needs to be informed on the action that we're taking and the route that we're going. And then finally, both the superintendent and the board have unique responsibilities communicating with and to the stakeholders. So I think this is critically important. Board members were elected to the board, you know, ultimately they're elected to represent a constituency, but they get on the board and then they have to represent not only that constituency that maybe helped get them elected, but they're also, they also need to work in the interest of the entire district. Superintendents, on the other hand, have been delegated the authority for the, for running the district and they more often than not are the ones who are dealing with issues day in and day out. So they often become the face of the district. And so that opportunity to be the face and to be communicating with stakeholders in the district is incredibly important. And so those two together share that leadership responsibility. Tiffany, want to talk a little bit about overlap?
Sure. So if Lon was here and we had our big sticky wall, you'd all have sheets of paper and we'd have good stuff up on the wall. We're at a little condensed time and I don't have a sticky wall, so you all have Post-it notes that are in front of you. And what I want you to do, I'm not going to give you five minutes like the slide says, but I'm going to give you a minute, here's another thing, sticky notes if anybody else needs them, is to think about where else might overlap exist. Lon talked about with policy and with communication, big strategic decisions, but when you're thinking about shared relationships between the superintendent and the board, where else might there be some overlap in the leadership? And I'll give you about a minute and then I'm going to ask if anybody is willing to share with it from out there. And the post-it note is just for you to keep notes, you don't, you don't have to put it anywhere. All right, so it's been about a minute. I know it's not a long time, but is anybody willing to share what they've thought about where you might see some overlap in leadership between the board and the superintendent?
Communicating with local and state government, agencies as well as district leaders and any family.
Great. Anybody else?
I had budget or district financials on my list.
I didn't hear you, Carl.
The budget or district finances on my list.
Budget and district finance.
Yeah, I had identifying key stakeholders for a given issue and timely for tonight, identifying capital improvement priorities.
Okay.
What we did in the past was auditing operations, we had a third party involved, it didn't involve, the board may have been oversight, but it was partnership completely with the administration for looking for opportunities. And so that, that process was one of tremendous overlap.
Okay. Great, anybody else? Dora?
Community stakeholders and families is what I had on my list.
Great.
And I think Andy has his hand up.
I do, you know, one of the ones that came up over a year ago, the issue about masking and what to do on a major public issue like that. and what to do on a major public issue like that. The board obviously has an opinion and has a role to play, but the reality is, it's not a simple yes/no question. The superintendent has to run the district in a safe way. And the board never gets into the logistics of that. We, kind of like with the budget, we may say we want an allocation for this program. We don't actually go back in and change the numbers and whatnot. We send it back to the administration and task them to come forth with a plan. So I think that's often how it plays out. If we really don't like what's presented to us, we can object and require something different. But we're not the ones that do the mechanics of it. It has to go back to the administration to be revised. It's often very complex and involves a lot of different departments. And then it comes back to us again. So, in that handoff back and forth, I think there is overlap and lots of room for confusion, friction, and everything else that makes life so much fun.
And we're in the middle of negotiations and that back and forth can get confusing. It can get emotional. It can get crazy. So, but there is overlap there.
Excellent. Thank you. And those are all excellent examples of where there's going to be some overlap in the leadership between the board and the superintendent. On this next slide, I'm not going to go through and read it all. You all have it in the slides that we've shared with you. But there's some additional areas where you could see of overlap, like affirming the mission and vision, helping capable employees become even better, advocating for safe school initiatives, things like that, which are additional examples of areas for overlap in a shared leadership.
All right, I'm going to pick up off of that and talk about this idea of, okay, well, if there's overlap, then maybe we do need to figure out where we're going to delegate responsibilities. And that comes back to this idea of roles and responsibilities between the board and the superintendent. So, what are some ways that we can address the overlap issue? It might be that, you know, do we get together as a board and a superintendent and kind of look at those areas where there is overlap and delineate, okay, we're going to have you cover this and we're going to have the board cover that? I'll give you an example, for instance. When I was on the board in SICA and we were going through the budget piece. It had been done where the superintendent was the one that was presenting the budget to the public. And the board just kind of sat there and didn't engage in the process, especially when we were doing a hearing or maybe we were presenting the budget to the assembly, whatever it might be. And as I thought about it, I thought to myself, well, wait a minute. The budget belongs to the board. The superintendent helps put it together. The superintendent implements it. But really, the board is ultimately responsible for the budget. And my conversation with the superintendent at the time, I said, Steve, Steve Bradshaw was the superintendent, I said, Steve, I want to talk to you about, instead of you presenting the budget, working with me to make sure I had a clear understanding of the budget and taking that on as a role of the board and working with the communities and presenting it to stakeholders and presenting it to the assembly and those kinds of things. And it really then brought that idea that it's the board's responsibility as the arbiter of the budget where those resources are going to go. And I think what I was able to do then is use the superintendent as an expert, you know, refer questions to the superintendent. Well, could we do this or could we do that? And ultimately, it seemed to work out pretty well. And that kind of got to that conversation that I had with him about, well, who does what? And of course, we had that conversation, I had that conversation with the superintendent and then we had it as a board with a superintendent. So, in the end, it seemed to work out quite well. And then the board superintendent establishes the what, well, what are we going to do? So, here's some examples of that delegation of responsibility. And I think many of you are probably familiar with these. Well, who is responsible for hiring personnel? The superintendent. Who is responsible for speaking to the media, determining the meeting agenda and approving the curriculum? So if we look at those examples and go down through them, we understand that there can be, and sometimes there is still overlap, in terms of these particular things. Hiring personnel, the superintendent hires personnel, but the board ultimately approves the contracts. And that can be very confusing for folks. The board is required by law, especially for certified positions, to approve those contracts, okay? And so the board plays a role, but the superintendent and their personnel are the ones that are responsible, have been delegated because they know what is required to hire the right people. Speaking to the media, generally, the superintendent will be the face of the district and often speaks to the media. At times, when required, the board president speaks on behalf of the board to the media. Determining the meeting agenda, how does that work in Anchorage? Who determines the meeting agenda in Anchorage?
I don't know. Yes, that would be, any member, any board member can submit items to the president. The president will work with the superintendent to design, to develop the agenda.
That's right. So oftentimes, that's, again, a shared piece. But we know, we know that oftentimes, it's at least the superintendent. And I guess I would defer that oftentimes, it's the executive administrative assistant who's been there forever and knows, you know, okay, these are the things that need to go on the agenda each month. And, you know, they're really kind of the keeper of that. But the superintendent ultimately will put together maybe a draft agenda. And as you mentioned, President Bellamy, that board members have the opportunity to add things to the agenda. And so the agenda kind of gets co-constructed, but oftentimes it originally comes from the administration because the administration knows the things that are coming up that the board needs to address. And then finally, approving curriculum. So here is one. Who has the ultimate authority to approve curriculum? Anybody?
Somebody after what?
Board.
The board, yes. And by statute, they are required to approve curriculum and instructional materials. But that doesn't mean the board knows all in terms of, well, what's going to be the best curriculum? So they rely on the educational leadership of the superintendent, the staff, and committees that are going to work on that and bring that forward, educate the board about that, and then the board has the ultimate authority to approve the curriculum. So as a board, sometimes you really need to have those conversations about who is responsible for some of these, if there's any question about how that works. So it comes back to this simple question. Are what we talk, is what we're talking about really a management activity or a governance activity? And it might seem pretty straightforward, but sometimes it can be a bit complicated, just as we talked about in terms of determining the meeting agenda. We're not going to take the five minutes because we don't have the time to do that and kind of go through that in a little bit more depth. The delegation of responsibility, as I just mentioned, superintendent generally hires, is responsible for hiring personnel. Speaking to the media, I mentioned that it's usually the superintendent, but sometimes the board chair. Determining the meeting agenda, it's kind of done by both the board and the superintendent. And then ultimately, approving curriculum is a board's role.
All right. So preventing responsibility conflicts. One, Lon talked a little bit about how when he was on the school board with SICA, how he had a conversation with the superintendent and the board about who does what and having that conversation regularly. Examples are the board's self-evaluation, who's responsible for ensuring that that's getting done? Is that the board president? Is it the superintendent that's reminding the board president? Is there an evaluation chair of a subcommittee or a committee that's handling that? Making sure that you're identifying who's in charge of that. Same thing with the superintendent performance evaluation. Who's responsible for which pieces of that? Do you have a facilitator? Is your board chair facilitating? Who's ensuring that the superintendent's self-evaluation is getting out and that you're collecting all the responses from the board members? Every time you have a new board member on the board, you have a new board. It's not just that individual, it's the whole board that is now new. So who's responsible for that new board member orientation? Knowing that this cannot sit on your superintendent's shoulders. Sure, they can hold a piece, but it's really the board's responsibility to ensure that new board members get an orientation, that it's meaningful, that it's ongoing, it's not just one and done. And those are just examples of how things to consider. Same thing with the board's self-evaluation. Things are not just black and white. There's a lot of gray areas. I think when you first run, I know for me, when I first ran from the board, I'm like, this is right and this is what we're going to do. And then I got on the board and went, oh, there's lots of other things to consider. So making sure that you're clear on who holds what responsibilities and knowing that intentionally strain into the other person's role or the other entity's role is avoidable. Board members should avoid micromanaging and superintendents need to be aware of what is governance decisions. I have to say, I worked with one of your charter schools this weekend and I was really impressed with the way they had their responsibilities laid out. They're like, okay, this person's responsible for this and it's documented and this person's responsible for this. And it was one of the best organized responsibility, like charts that I've seen in my experience with AASD. I'm like, this is a great example of being really clear on who's responsible for what in order to prevent those responsibility conflicts. Now, on the next slide, we're not going to take five minutes, but there's three questions here on the slide that if Lon can pop them up. I'm just going to let you take about a minute and a half since there's three questions this time. But thinking about what issues should the superintendent address without consulting the board for its opinion or approval? Likewise, what issues or decisions should the school board entertain without the superintendent's input? And what issues require collaboration before action? So I'm going to give you about a minute and a half. I'll, less time if I see everybody just kind of sitting there. And then I'm going to ask you all to share out. Well, whoever wants to, to share out. All right. I need to get the Jeopardy music. Then I can just play it. All right. So, first one, we'll just, anybody willing to share what they think might be issues the superintendent should address without consulting the board for opinions or approval? Dora?
My answers are all very short. ASD staffing issues.
No days.
Health and safety.
Day-to-day operational issues. It is pretty comprehensive, that one.
Okay. Excellent. What about issues or decisions that should, the board should entertain without the superintendent's input?
I would chip in. I don't think there are very many things that we should consider without the superintendent's input. And part of it is that often, there's just unintended consequences to things that may seem really trivial to a lot of people. Like, oh, we can change this. It doesn't impact anybody. It doesn't affect anything else. My personal experience inside a district is, that's almost never true. So, other than things that really are just like board business, you know, if we're going to change the menu of what we're going to have for dinner on board meeting nights, yeah, I feel pretty comfortable with that. But if it involves the district more than that, then yeah, I think we ought at least run it by the superintendent first.
I echo that with one exception. It's the hiring of a new superintendent. The board is doing that separately. But with the exception of that, I think inviting the superintendent's input regardless of decisions, except for the dinner, yeah, that's just good practice, I think.
All right. And I think the board can decide what trainings it would like. Again, probably with input from the superintendent. But we could come up with, you know, revisions to our bylaws. Don't need permission, but, you know, it's kind of like, you didn't use the word permission though, did you?
No.
The question was just without input, without input. Yeah, I think everything gets input. I mean, it really, I mean, I can't think of anything that wouldn't get input.
Organization of the board.
Oh yeah, that's true. Because she didn't vote, she didn't vote on the officers.
Right.
That's true. That's a good one.
And I think the hiring of the superintendent was appropriate too. And then finally, what issues require collaboration before action?
Everything else, bonding, budget, negotiations.
Yep.
Goals, guardrails, whatever.
So it sounds like you all have a pretty clear idea of what shared leadership looks like, what it looks like in your own district, some ideas of where the board has its purview with its one employee, and also where the superintendent holds a lot of that responsibility in the day-to-day operations and health and safety and things like that. Lon?
Okay, to wrap up this part of the question.
Hold on then.
That ASD, just for purpose sake, has two actual employees. Katie is not under my supervision. And for, I don't really know the reason, but she is under the boards. And so here, there's two employees that the board has.
It did go through a change. I used to be under the superintendent.
Wow, that's interesting. Yeah, I think that's, there might be one or two other boards, but I don't know of any really that have delineated it like that. But certainly, that's at the board's purview. So, interesting. Okay, I'm going to wrap this piece up. Just making the statement that, you know, even though we've gone down through that, we've had the opportunity to reflect on this a little bit and come up with some examples, I'm here to tell you that mistakes are going to be made, lines are going to be crossed, and it's not always smooth sailing. It's not always as black and white as it might seem as we sit here, kind of as an armchair quarterback reflecting on this. I mean, I think it's great to do, but I think we have to realize that it is complicated. This, it's not simple. And really, it's about developing relationships. And what you may find over time is, boards are going to have sometimes certain strengths and superintendents are going to have certain strengths and/or challenges for each of those individuals. So it's really important that boards understand the nature of the relationship between their superintendent and themselves and where those strengths and challenges lie. It really is about developing trust between the two entities and knowing that this may change over time. So, the board is going to be entering into a new relationship with a new person at the helm of the district, right? So that's going to be a whole different scenario for you as board members to consider. It's, you know, you're going to be coming in with something where you're going to have to begin to build that trust and understand what that relationship is going to look like. And that relationship probably will change over time. At first, it's going to be probably a bit tenuous. Everybody's going to be a little bit anxious about how this is going to work. At first, it's going to be probably a bit tenuous. Everybody's going to be a little bit anxious about how this is going to work. Hopefully, everybody's going to be hopeful that it's going to work out well. But you just never know until some time goes by. And you know, you hit some stressful situations and see how they go. How does the board and the superintendent react? It is dependent on good and frequent communication, and we can't stress that enough. So when you think about a new superintendent coming on, I think you're going to really want to think about, okay, how can we continually as a board have good, frequent communication with the new superintendent? What is that going to look like? And in the end, it cannot be a power struggle if you wish to focus on student outcomes. It has to be shared, related, shared leadership. Each of you have a unique role to play in that leadership, but it has to be something where you're, you're working together in order to focus on student outcomes. We can't be talking about the, the big people problems. We need to be focusing on the little people. Any, any other comments or questions on this idea of, you know, roles and responsibilities? This was a little different take on roles and responsibilities than we went through when we met with you in May and, and talked about that initially in terms of that delineation between roles and responsibilities. All right. Well, we have one more piece to go through, and that is going to revolve around decisions. So stand by one second and let me bring that up, get that ready to go.
So this last piece that we're talking about is decision-making in the governance team. And I'm just going to get started while Lon's pulling up the PowerPoint. We've talked about what sort of items may be shared between the superintendent and the board. And we're going to dive a little bit deeper into that until identifying who makes those decisions. So as individuals, we know that we're responsible for our own individual vote. When we're coming into school board meetings with open minds, not deciding on issues before we get here, and have heard all the information that's presented, whether it's by the superintendent, testimony from other board members or the public. So we're responsible for our own votes. But once we come together and we cast those votes, it's the results of those together that is the decision, decision of the board, which is generally done other than with the hiring of the superintendent with input from the superintendent when we're making those decisions. So again, I'm going to give you about a minute to, it says turn to your elbow partner. You can if you want, or you can just talk to yourself in your head about what are some examples of decisions that are made by boards versus the decisions that are made by the superintendent. So just take about a minute and think about what are decisions that are made by the board. And then I'll ask for sharing out. See, I always say about a minute or something, then I always end up cutting the time in half. But does anybody want to share what they think are some decisions that are made by the board?
Well, you told us, you told us, we talked about the officers already.
Officers?
And then, oh.
This, this can be with the superintendent input. This is not just by the board, that's just like, also with superintendent input.
Okay. I was thinking about the distinction between board policies and administrative regulations. And so
Yeah, that's a good one.
Distinction there.
Yeah, the what and the how, yeah.
Anything else?
Well, the board approves the final budget.
Final budget?
Curriculum.
I mean, adopting the curriculum?
Bonds, heard that.
The board makes the final decision on that.
Yeah. Those governance, so yeah, there are those governance pieces there. Then, and that we've heard a lot of those already, just in the sharing, popping it out, the financial oversight, the policy, the curriculum. Approving of the contracts, not the hiring, but approving of those contracts. Adopting the strategic plan. And then on the flip side, decisions that are then made by the superintendent are budget implementation, making those recommendations to the board about policy and AR implementation, identifying when there's policy needs within the district. Implementation of the board's decisions when it comes to curriculum and instruction. The HR hiring, evaluating, terminating. Want to go back one to the board one? Can you go back a slide, Lon? There we go. Question?
Just the, what the board has been doing in the past of how they define adopt the strategic plan. You know, in regards to the level that that represents and the involvement of the board. We, we focused on outcomes. That's everything that, you know, you're supposed to focus all your meetings on outcome. You need to focus on other issues, but the adoption of the the adoption of the strategic plan, what, how comprehensive that is, what the role of the board will be, and how, you know, other than, you know, sustaining that goal, but the adoption and formal adoption of the strategic plan is an interesting question to me.
Just building on that strategic plan item, something, a practice that we do when we're working with boards on strategic plan is working on those big key goal areas. What are the goal areas that the board wants to focus on? And then once those have been identified, working with the administration to identify the how that's going to be implemented in those goal areas. Lon?
Okay. That's, that's a good question. And I think those are, you know, sometimes boards or districts, boards and superintendents, in terms of the strategic plan, may have a little bit different take. Many districts that we work with and, and our approach just to strategic planning is kind of a grassroots effort from the community. It comes from work within the community and then with work with the school and then comes to the board for adoption. And as Tiffany said, then that piece is really all the details of the implementation and all the objectives and the strategies to get the goal actually implemented is left primarily to the staff and the administration. And then when we talk about, you know, these ID, these, these pieces of management, the budget implementation, policy and AR implementation, all of these things are the purview basically of the management of, of the superintendent. Doesn't mean that the board doesn't have some oversight of that, but the board doesn't manage those actual pieces. They're going to want to be informed of it, but they don't, you know, that's not their, their role or responsibility. So one of the other pieces that's really important in terms of the decision-making part, and this is this idea of this relationship between the superintendent of the board and the board, is this idea about using data to inform decision-making. So this consists of really using various different types of data to help the board understand the decisions that it's going to need to make at the board table. It creates a logical basis for driving those decisions, and it provides an opportunity for accountability and transparency. And I know Pat's talked about that a couple of times about, okay, how are we going to make sure that we're going to be accountable, one, to ourselves if we want to say that we're going to be moving forward with the strategic plan? But then two, most importantly, to stakeholders and the students that were accountable and transparent to those folks. And then finally, forces the board and the superintendent to monitor those things, evaluate progress on board goals in the strategic plan, and that's a continual cycle. This idea around creating a framework for evaluating student achievement and student outcomes is incredibly important. And I know the work that you've been doing with the Council of Great City Schools really focuses on creating a very detailed framework for making that happen. So data, ask yourself these three questions. One, who gathers the data? Anybody?
The staff.
Right. Superintendent and administration are really those designated, and that's their primary role is to help inform the board with data that supports where the district is going and what's happening with student achievement. Board members at times can provide data, but it's not their primary role. They may provide perspective and insight. So it could be that a board member might bring in outside data that would help a, a board consider something, but that's not necessarily their primary role, at least within the district. But it's not out of the realm of possibility that data can come from other sources, including the board. How is data disseminated? Well, I hit the button too quick, but usually, most of the, most of the data goes outright through, through your meeting packets or it's online now. But it really is the primary way that data is presented to the board. So the board has the opportunity to review, look at it in order to make decisions. Now, for your board, and I know you have frequent work sessions, is it during the work sessions that you're able to take a look at data and talk about it?
We actually are doing that at, at our regular meetings as well as sometimes in our work sessions as well.
Okay.
And we also get data updates in our, in Board Connect. So we have a couple of ways that we get it.
Okay. And, and in terms of the kinds of data, what kinds of data do you often look at?
So like tonight, we're looking at the data that's around our goal, one of our goals. Looking at data over a span of time and looking at, tonight it's life, career and college readiness. And so we're looking at one of the indicators.
Okay.
Prior, we've looked at at least go, the first, our goal and guard, not, yeah, we, we've done our goals for reading and math. I just requested some suspension data, so we get all kinds. Just depends, survey data. Just depends on what the board requests.
All right, great. And then the last piece here in terms of, of this particular slide with regard to data is how are decisions going to be made using that data? So in a consensus scheme, that, that generally means everybody, obviously, the entire board is going to come to some agreement, okay? It's not necessarily a vote. It's not the majority rule. And that's generally in terms of consensus, that might happen at a work session or something, and maybe you come to some consensus, okay, well, we need to investigate this more, or we need more information in this, in this regard. And it's a very informal sense versus a majority rule where the board is actually taking votes, and it's much more formal and, and definitive in that regard. So Tiffany, you want to talk to us a little bit about who gathers the data?
Sure. So we've already identified that your staff is the one that's gathering the data. And primarily, that's your superintendent because they have the greatest familiarity with the data sources and how things are measured and can provide some context to the board regarding that. While board members can get data and provide data, it's not your primarily, primary role as a board member. You're generally not the designated data gatherer for the school district. So you're typically not authorized to do that. But it may bring some important insight and perspective when it comes to the governance of the board.
I guess my only comment here, we, we've gotten in the past external information on a regular basis, such the Council of Great City Schools did a good job of giving us an assessment of how our different programs are operating. I haven't seen that this year. Not, it should have been out by now. Because it usually comes out, I thought, in October. But there are some external sources out there that the board gets that's, I hate to go on objective, but they're third-party type review out there that I, I just think is a, is a key area that can make a real difference in assessing the district in an objective way. And that, that's, it's a question I'll raise later is where that report's at. Because I'd like to get a copy of it. But I think it's very beneficial. It shows you how well you're doing against the other top 100 size school districts.
And I guess my question is, so when you're getting that information from Great City Schools, is that information that as, as board members were bringing forth, or is that something perhaps the administration works to bring forward to the board? So it's just who is getting that to bring forward?
The question I'm asking.
Well, it comes to the district, and then I, I think board members can just request it, or we can, yeah, it's simple. Yeah, the Council of Great City Schools report, I haven't
The annual?
But it probably came out
Yeah, because I'm thinking
Is that like the KPIs or?
Yeah, yeah, both. They do a quite a bit of this, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just an example. So there isn't, there isn't a report that's out there that board members may find.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just, I think that, that type of information is not being gathered, but rather, they have access to it. And that's the kind of information I find meaningful.
Oh, yeah.
And So that's perfect, just the perfect example of the whole conversation we've been having this afternoon. Who's responsible for collecting it? How is it getting out? And just perfect example. So, but when we start thinking about say, board members collecting data, you know, sometimes it can provide insight. But what, just, I'm just going to throw it out there. I'm not going to give you time to like write it down or anything, but what are some challenges for the school board? If you have unsolicited, independent board, an independent board member gathering data, what might be some challenges that you could face?
So I am guilty. I was guilty on my first year on the board. I have learned to do better. I'm a researcher, but I, I like to, I like to do that. I mean, I, I have a question. I need to look for the answer. But it's, 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 it interferes for me. I learned what I feel I did. I interfered with the staff's ability to do the work. And then I imposed my judgment in, in a way that I, that I shouldn't have. And I did that over and over again. And sorry, guys. But so I, so I still do my research. I just try to contain it and ask questions about it, right? Ask questions, formulate questions that would get me to understand better or yeah. So that was great. I didn't think it was a big thing at the time, though, to tell you the truth.
Anybody else? Or Dave?
I guess I don't understand the premise of the question. What could possibly be wrong with a board member researching issues and bringing information to the table?
So I don't think there's anything wrong with it. Lon, would you care to respond?
Well, I would say, that's a, that's a fair question, Mr. Donnelly. I think there, I think there are some good, some very good things about board members bringing information to the board table. I think the big piece is whether or not the intention of that information is to move the work of the board forward as a team, or is it intended to be disruptive? Sometimes disruption is not a bad thing, and, and I'll admit that, that sometimes we need to push a little bit. But I guess as we look at this as a shared leadership responsibility, and as Mara was just talking about her experience, I, I think that the idea of bringing that information forward can be very important. And the way that the board works with that and the way that board member brings that forward so that the board has the opportunity to work with it is something that's important to consider.
We're all getting information from staff. We get it from the public. We get feedback from a lot of people. So I see nothing wrong with the unsolicited, independent gathering that data and all. I do see, agree with you, Lon. It depends upon how you present it forward. If you've, if it's not, if it might be disruptive to the current plan, but you're challenging it and you do it in an appropriate way and where you have a discussion before you use it without vetting the information and giving others a chance to respond would be a problem. But short of that, I think this is But short of that, I think this is an important role, because if we're going to be the voice of the public, you need to be able to have access to the, to the questions and issues that staff have in regards to operations. And I feel like that's a real valuable role that every board member should be playing.
So if I could respond as well, I have also been guilty as a board member, similar to Margot, and learned in my experience as a board how to really do that. So if there's things that were coming up and I had information, I would work with my board chair, or when I was the board chair, work with the superintendent. Is this information that we could give out to board members ahead of time? How, how would this be beneficial to the conversation we're having? Is it pertinent? Is it relevant data? Because sometimes we have data that's really apples and oranges, and having those conversations and not just hitting people, again, no surprises, at the boardroom. I'm one of those people that likes time to be able to read through things. We know that board members respond to information different. Some people are like, okay, I see it, got it. Other people go, I want to take some time to read through this. I don't feel like I can comment to it or really evaluate the data in front of me without having time to read it.
Yeah, and part of, the part of it for, for me personally was I didn't understand how the board operated early on, right? I didn't understand communication, governance, and finance is the one thing I did understand, but that, those other functions and how we work things through our committees, I did not get that at the time. So then, at a board meeting, I would bring something up that I knew to be fact, which probably wasn't the right place to bring it up, but there are places to bring it up. Work sessions are wonderful places, unless we're doing a training to bring up things like that, so, anyway.
All right, so I, just time check, I'm looking at it long, we have about three minutes, so I'm going to let you move on with your next slide, and the rest of the questions we can address at a different time.
Well, I think maybe what we'll do, Tiffany, is we'll, we'll go to our final slide, the summary. But I just wanted to highlight, I'll, I'll go through here pretty quickly. You know, there's, there's things when you are making decisions, considerations. You know, the board's not always going to be unanimous. And it's not the board's response, if it's not the board's responsibility to be unanimous. There's consequences for decisions. Teams often might make the wrong decision. The following slides kind of go into more detail in that. So, you know, when the, when the decision is not unanimous, I felt like when I was on the board, sometimes the best decisions we made were split decisions, because the public had the opportunity and each board member had the opportunity to hear a different perspective. I think that's really important. When the decision is not for the board, okay, that's something that's been delegated to the administration. So that's when we're straying into those roles that we shouldn't stray into. And then consequences of decisions. What happens? Every decision is important. Every decision that you as a board are going to make is going to have some effect on the system. And opportunity.
We're cruising this fast, but you have the handouts in your folders, so you do have the detailed.
Here's one that, that oftentimes I don't think we think about. What about, what happens when you make the wrong decision? When you realize as a board you have made the wrong decision? Maybe, maybe you've got information back. We talked about that, we're evaluating things. You know, there's no guarantee that you're always making the right decision, and there's no one right answer. I think the pandemic has shown that there is no one right answer for everybody. No, well, no board is infallible. The question is, what do you do when you feel like the decision was wrong? You need to understand it, you need to own it, and you need to correct it. So the final slide just says you were elected to make those decisions as publicly elected officials. Each of you brings a unique perspective and your voice to the board table, and that matters. You can use data to inform your decisions, and you absolutely should. Know where the data comes from, what the quality of that data is. Split decisions are often common. Sometimes they can be the best decisions. All decisions have consequences. You need to think about students, and correct the decisions when they're wrong, if you can. So be transparent in your decision-making, and hopefully students and your community will do better because of it. So, boy, we just squeaked that in. It's five o'clock.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. You guys were great. Thank you. We appreciate your time. And so we'll.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of a negotiation update.
All right, thank you, everybody, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Bye.
Is there a second? Okay. Thank you, guys.